I'd like to call the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Thursday, August 18, 2022 to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ethan, would you please call the roll?
President Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Marshazga.
Here.
Trustee Hannan.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Also President Village Clerk Sol.
Thank you. President's report, I have no report this evening, so we will move on to the Managers' report.
Thank you. I have two items to note. As many are aware, the property tax bills for Cook County have been delayed. It's estimated it'll be about four months. Cook County has actually rolled out a bridge loan program, but I am happy to report to the Village Board that based on our sound financial and fiscal policies, that there is no need for that for the Village of Riverside, and also that we continue to be on target with our budget projections and revenue projections are coming in higher than anticipated. The second item that I wanted to report to the Village Board is the Riverside Fire Department received a $100,000 grant for general fund operations, and so that will help allocate funding whether it is for staffing or for capital needs within the fire department, as it'll be a derived surplus that will then be utilized for next year. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Manager Francis. Next on the agenda is resident comments from non-agenda items. Does anybody wish to speak on non-agenda items? Hearing none. We move on to the consent agenda. Ethan, if you would please.
Approve voucher list of bills, August 18, 2022. Review and file Public Works July Monthly Report. Approve Village Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Minutes, August 4, 2022. Review and File Landscape Advisory Commission Regular Meeting Minutes, July 12, 2022. Review and File Riverside TV Commission Regular Meeting Minutes, July 11, 2022. Review and File Preservation Commission Regular Meeting Minutes, June 9, 2022. Motion approving an amendment between the Village of Riverside and Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council/Lodge 39, effective January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2024. A resolution authorizing the village manager to waive competitive bidding and enter into an agreement with PaveConnect in the amount of $70,000 for pavement rejuvenation to be conducted on various village roadways. A resolution authorizing the sale or disposal of personal property owned by the Village of Riverside, and an ordinance amending Section 862d for minimum charges, Section 863 billing collections, and Section 879a to sewerage service charges of the Village Code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois relative to water and sewer rates.
Thank you, Ethan. Do any trustee want any of these items to be removed? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion.
Motion made.
Motion by trustee Gallegos, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Marshazga. Clerk Sol.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Department Board and Commission reports. Economic Development Commissioner let on the proposal for an additional business district within this village CBD. Karen, would you take us through that, please? I'm sorry, Jennifer's not here.
Sorry, give me just one moment to pull that up.
Well, I can do this. Jennifer Forney, Chairman of the Economic Development Commission, wrote the letter saying that they did not feel that doing the 1% proposed sales tax for the central business district is prudent at this time because of inflation, workers' supply chain. So I basically said she wants to hold off on that. I have spoken to a couple of the business district owners, and basically they followed suit with exactly what Ms. Forney and EDC have said. So is there any other questions on this?
No, but I'll make a comment. There's a lot of benefits that come out of this tax district, so I'd like to revisit this at a later time.
Sure. Yes.
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you. So we will put this agenda for a later time. Okay, we move on to pending business. Update of the 12 months waived business fees. Director Johnson.
So before you tonight, we put together a summary table of, sorry, of the new, of the business fees that we have waived via ordinance 3092 and ordinance 3083. I'm still waiting on reports from the Illinois Department of Revenue to calculate how much sales tax that we have received from these businesses and places for eating tax. We are still working with a couple of them for collections on their places for eating tax, but we, overall, the fees waived were just shy of $14,000, and I do feel confident in saying we have received much more than that in sales tax dollars.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Johnson? Okay. Hearing none. An update on the police department's hybrid vehicle. Commander Coder.
So the village manager did provide you with an agenda for the hybrid vehicle, just speaking about, it was put into service in 2020. It wasn't until December of 2020 after purchasing it. It has had, probably been out of service between five to six months already just because of some major issues with the, dealing with the emergency side of it. Some of the big ones, I'll just highlight a couple here. It had to go have the engine completely rebuilt. They had to rebuild three cylinders on it, kept misfiring and spark plug issues with the direct injectors for it. So that took, was out of service for about two months. And a couple of the big ones, a lot of the things that we're seeing with this vehicle every time it goes out of service are just major electrical issues. So just an update on what's going on with that. I know we're constantly being asked if we'll continue with that with the hybrid vehicles. At this point, it just doesn't seem like it should be our primary emergency vehicle out on the street handling emergency calls.
So I'd like to just add a few things about that also. I have had residents of town who have sent me information regarding different types of electric vehicles, and I welcome that information. Doing some research on it too, the price of some of those vehicles that are a little more durable and probably could last a little bit longer than the vehicle we currently have. The price is pretty high right now. We do see some of the prices coming down, but it is definitely something that we are constantly looking at and reviewing. Commander Coder manages our fleet here at Riverside. It is a priority of us, of ours, to look at all these things, make sure that we're getting the right product here for Riverside, but also looking towards the future of what we can do with electric vehicles. On the fire side of it, the first electric fire vehicle was just put out. LA County took delivery of it. They're trying it out, but like any electric vehicle, they're finding a lot of issues with it because they're at a scene possibly pumping for a while, an extended period of time, which is like driving over the, driving down the expressway with the vehicle standing still with the rotation of the pump as they're pumping water, and they're finding that the vehicle isn't lasting as long on those charges of electricity, so they have to switch it out with a regular diesel vehicle with a pump on it. So they are coming along, and I think it's a great thing. I know we've looked at all sorts of different aspects of it, but definitely we are staying on top of it and looking at it and trying to get it in here at Riverside, but we want to get something in here that is going to not be in the shop for over five months, over a two-year period, that will function properly for us and bring us into the future.
Thank you. Were all those repairs under warranty, I hope?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. We move on to new business. If nobody minds, I would like to move to letter C, resolution authorizing temporary use for the outdoor dining. Mr. Connolly is here, and he is in the midst of his soft opening at Sandtrap, so I'd like to get him in and out and back to his bar as soon as I possibly can. So we have a resolution authorizing a temporary use for an outdoor dining, execution of a license agreement or a demolition agreement to use public property outdoor dining area. Connolly, DeSani, DBA, Sandtrap Bar and Grill. Mr. Chris, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Village Board and residents, I'm Chris Connolly. I'm part of Connolly and DeSai, the Sandtrap Bar and Grill, located here in Riverside. As Mr. Ballerine had mentioned, we are in the process of having our soft opening today. Definitely looking forward to being a good staple in the Riverside community for everyone for a long time to come. Definitely would enjoy grant or use of the outside patio area as the additional space would be helpful for business and also for individuals that would prefer the outside area versus inside. We've spent a lot of time remodeling the place and getting it up to par, so hopefully the village and the residents are very happy with how it's come along. So thank you very much for your time. That's me.
Thank you, Chris. Did anyone have any questions for Chris, while he's here?
I don't, but I'll comment. Congratulations on your grand opening. Long time waiting.
Okay. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Pollak.
Thank you. I appreciate the business opening. Look forward to having some meals and drinks there. Thank you. Some time ago, not directly related to this particular business, but some time ago, the board had asked staff to look into updating our standards, design standards for outdoor sidewalk seating such as this. I understand, you know, that takes time, and that's fine, but I guess I would just ask, if we do upgrade those standards, one, do we have the unilateral authority to require that outdoor sidewalk seating areas conform, and perhaps even without that, would the applicant be willing to upgrade the outdoor design or outdoor sidewalk seating area if we did upgrade the standards?
That is something I definitely would have to discuss with my partner.
Could you go to the podium, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. That is something I would definitely have to discuss with my partner. Outside seating is something that is very important. You know, obviously, when, if there is a new ordinance passed, then we would obviously want to be in compliance, right? We're all about following the rules, safe, clean environment. So, you know, if something was to change, then, I mean, yeah, we would consider it. It is something I have to speak with my partner about because, once again, I do have a partner, so I just have to make sure we're in agreeance. But, I mean, it is something we'd consider, yes.
Yeah. Mr. Hannan?
There's no design standards on outdoor seating as of now, correct?
There are.
Well, I mean, that would.
Proclude what he's putting in. No.
Right, right. I just, you know, I sit on this board to try to encourage new business, try to encourage businesses staying in Riverside. You know, I think it's difficult to ask somebody who's on his opening night to agree to something that, number one, hasn't passed, hasn't been discussed, and not to know what exactly it is. You know, we have our ordinances in place. They're in compliance with the existing ordinance. You know, if and when the new standards come to the board, you know, we have that discussion. We discuss with legal counsel whether it can apply retroactively and move on from there, but my preference would be just to approve this as drafted and, you know, let Mr. Connolly and his partners have a successful business, create a lot of sales tax revenue, and give us someplace to stop on the way home.
Exactly. Definitely. You're all welcome to stop by after the meeting.
Go ahead.
Isn't this kind of a grandfathered structure, and if we do upgrade our standards?
We'd have to make that decision. I think one of the things that I've looked at, and I hear what Doug's saying, is there are some nice, you know, thing, like the fencing around the bar, or the fencing around Choo Choo, the new fencing that's going to go in Cubenito's, those are all, but if you, if you look at all these different businesses, the structures that are around them are very integral to the business itself. So, for example, in front of Choo Choo, they just have the two planters because they really can't put something in front of it. In the parking lot, yes, they have to put the fence because there's a parking lot. When you get to La Barra, his is more of a plastic wicker type of look, and, you know, that's there because it needs to be portable, needs to be moved. I don't think personally either of those options is, is the same problem that, or the same solution for Mr. Connolly and the Sandtrap. I think a bar needs to be something more substantial. Plus, with Mr. Connolly's wall that he has, or it is, it's, there could be an argument that says it's not actually a divider, it's furniture, because those are where your seats are. So I, you know, I think we should, you know, before we get into the designs or further standards, I think we should sit back and, and take a look at some of the things around. I asked Mr. Connolly, I know that there has been discussion that people like to see air light through these walls. They don't like the solid wall. So Mr. Connolly agreed to pull off one of his four-by-eight sheets on the outside, which shows now a little bit more, more air, so I would, I would hope that everybody, the trustees, get an opportunity to go over there and take a look from, from the inside and also have a buckle down.
Yeah.
Beer, and, and move on from there. But I congratulate you on your, on your opening.
Thank you.
So you can get back to your thing.
I appreciate it.
And we will continue to discuss the parameters for surrounds. So if I, if I can have a motion in a second to approve this.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion by trustee Evans, second by trustee Gallegos. Ethan, if you please call the roll?
Further discussion.
Oh, further discussion? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to be, to be clear. I was under the impression that the applicant wanted to make that change, was agreeable to changing it out in the future, and that's why I brought it up. I certainly am not trying to impose additional cost to them upfront, and, and I apologize. I misunderstood that they were agreeable to it, so.
You know what? That's my fault. I'm sorry. I didn't get back to you today. I apologize.
No problem. But, but, yeah, this is all good. All good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Ethan, if you please call the roll?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye. Motion carries. We will go back into regular order, and again, I apologize. I should have, I've been running around all day today. I should have gotten back to you. We have an ordinance, D 96, with the fencing. An ordinance approving a variation from Section 10 to 7-3 accessory structures to allow fencing at six foot in height beginning at 22 feet from the building line instead of the required 40 feet at School District 96. Ashley, I was looking for.
Great. Yes. So I'm representing this case here. So the petitioner, School District 96, requested a variation to allow a six-foot fence to be installed. There is a code provision. The code provision requires that any fencing installed closer than 40 feet from the front building line be at a height of four feet instead of six. And so when they redid the playground at Ames Elementary, they had planned the playground very close in proximity to the next-door neighbor at 390 Repton Road, and as such, they've observed outcomes and received support from the neighbor as well to increase the privacy and enhance the barrier of noise and, and privacy between the two properties. So they've requested this six-foot in height fence, as noted in the ordinance title, to begin 22 feet from the front building line instead of the required 40. So it's just a separation of, you know, several feet. And Planning and Zoning Commission, at their July 27 public hearing, held, held that hearing. They voted five to zero to recommend approval of this variation. So if you have questions about any specific conversations or that recommendation, let me know. Thank you.
Any discussion? Is that it?
So the wall only goes along the property line by the house, right? Not in the front?
Yes. So it's just along the side property line. So instead of, you know, closer to the street, it'll be set back, but the height of the fence will exceed four feet. It'll be six feet instead, and a privacy barrier, wood fence.
And then the metal, the metal fence in the front stays?
Yes. So the front yard, it'll be open.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Should be noted that this, this was recommended by the Plan Commission at five to zero. So is, I would entertain a motion in a second to approve this.
Moved.
Motion by trustee Gallegos, second.
Second.
Trustee Marshazga. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Ethan?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye. Motion carries. Second one is an ordinance approving a variation allowing a temporary membrane structure, temporary storage tent in the street yard at 116 Berry Point Road, Riverside Presbyterian Church. This has two portions of its, of the variations. One is the length of time. They, I believe they went to the Planning and Zoning for a variance to get it to allow them to have it up for 90 days, and the second part of this is for them to be able to put it in their street yard. The 90 days did not pass the Planning and Zoning. The street yard did. So, and as we work through these, I think we need to be, make sure that we, once we pass this, this street yard variation, this runs with the property for perpetuity. So we want to make sure we're getting what, we're giving what we want to give. So Michael, would you, would you try to explain this a little bit better than I just did?
Yeah. So in terms of the street yard, you know, you're granting authority to put it in the street yard. If the regulations for, but because you didn't approve the days, the additional days, that street yard authority is just when they put up the tent in conformance with the ordinance. And another aspect of that is if that ordinance later changes so that you have less days, for instance, that you could put it up during a particular year, that would apply to them. They're not grandfathered to put it in to the street yard for 30 or 45 days if the ordinance were to happen to change.
Okay. So if we should change it to, say, three days, they would then be able to always put it in the street yard, but it would be restricted to what our new code would say?
Absolutely correct.
So we would, is there any questions on the 90 days that did not pass PCC? Any discussion? Do we make a motion to concur with the?
Built into the ordinance, unless someone wants to change the findings, built into the ordinance is acceptance of the denial of that aspect of it. So if nobody's interested in granting the 90 days, then you just move on to the next issue, and when you approve the ordinance, you'll be denying the 90 days.
Okay. Yes, Pollak?
I could see the answer to my question by looking in the audience, but is there a reason the applicant is not here?
Can't answer that question.
No, we did, we did let them know that it'd be heard on this day, bringing the finding of fact on the 18th.
Thank you.
Okay. The, the second part of this is the motion to allow the tent, an ordinance approving the tent in the street yard, and that's the other part of the ordinance. Correct. So if we approve, if we get a motion to approve the street yard, that covers both of the, the different.
Approving the ordinance, yes.
Okay.
Will cover both.
Is there any question, or?
If, if we vote to disagree with the findings of the PCC on the, the street yard, what are they entitled to do at that point? Are they, just can't use a tent at all? Can they use it on a temporary basis for a specific event?
They could use it in the parking lot.
Parking lot, yep.
I asked the question if they could, if they were able to put it up for a 24-hour period in the street yard, and what would be the answer to that if they just put it up and took it down in the same day for a 24-hour period? Because they don't need permission to do that.
Well, they don't need it from a day perspective, but they need it from a location perspective, so they would not be able to.
They would not be able to do that. Okay. And if we want to, if we want to recommend against the PCC, it takes four votes?
Nope. Only to overcome a negative recommendation.
Okay. So.
So the only negative recommendation was on the days.
Okay.
So, so, you know, the ordinance is either going to pass or not in terms of this, but I guess it takes four votes to pass the ordinance, so in a sense, you're correct. I'm sorry.
Okay. So if I can have a motion?
Could somebody clarify what we're voting on? What's the link, which one, which, what are we voting on?
It would be a motion to approve the ordinance, which is in your packet, which allows the tent to be erected in the street yard for whatever amount of days are allowed in the ordinance, but denies allowing them to erect it for more than 30 days consecutively or 45 in a year.
Or?
And the PNC.
Clarification?
Ms. Pollak, please.
The motion could be to deny the ordinance as well, correct?
Sure.
And the PNC agreed with the, just they, they rejected the request to put the tent in for longer than 60 days.
Correct.
And they approved the other part.
They approved the street yard and denied the days.
Correct. So they found it was the only, I mean, apparently they've been placing it there.
Forever.
Forever, and it's the only practical place from their perspective to put it.
Okay.
If I may just make a quick note, Assistant Village Manager Memoral noted, and so did Chairperson Mateo, that there were a couple of omission, not omissions, it was more Scrivener type items that wanted to be amended as the findings of fact. So I wanted to make sure that that was noted for the Village Board. You'll see it noted in red, but it's printed so that you can see what it is, just so that you have it for your reference, and so then noting that further record as well.
So if I can entertain a motion in a second to approve this ordinance or deny this ordinance?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by trustee Evans to approve?
Motion to approve?
To approve, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second it as well.
Second by trustee Gallegos. Any further, yes, trustee Pollak?
Just to explain how I intend to vote, I intend to vote no. I understand that it's difficult or less desirable to put the tent in the side yard, but I didn't see any reason why it can't be done.
You mean in the parking lot?
The parking lot. I'm sorry. Thank you. It's very common to put tents in parking lots with weights, sandbags or sand barrels or whatever kind of weight, and from, from my limited knowledge of what I understand about that, that's just as safe and secure as pounding stakes into the ground. So I, that was the only thing I saw in the minutes from the Plan Commission that may have led to a reason why they recommended approval of that particular aspect of the variation, and I, I'm not convinced that's the case, so I intend to vote no on the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak.
If I may, I did watch the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting proceeding on this, the hearing, and I believe that. And I believe that there was testimony by one of the trustees to the, of the church to the effect that people were parking in the parking lot for their events. And that is why they could not erect the tent in the parking lot. So I personally see no reason to disagree with the Planning and Zoning Commission's finding of the hardship in placing it on the Berry Point side or in the parking lot as opposed to the street yard on the Scottswood side. So I would second and concur with trustee Evans here.
Thank you, trustee Marshazga. And I think it also should be noted that while I do agree with Doug, you can put a tent in the parking lot, there's no question. But the parking lot does house their, their handicap parking too. Go ahead.
Could just follow up, the second and equally relevant aspect of that to me is that, is the question is, is there an inherent right to have a temporary tent? I don't have room for a tennis court in my backyard. Does that mean that I can get a variation because tennis courts are allowed? I would say no, it just means I can't have a tennis court. And I think this type of structure is not essential to the use of the property. In other words, if they're not allowed to have a tent, it's not as if we're, it's a taking where we're denying them reasonable use of the property. If you don't have room for a tent, you shouldn't, guess what, you don't get to have a tent. And I think the encroachment for 30, 45 days over the course of the summer of a structure in the street yard is not appropriate.
Okay, any further, yes?
Yeah, it is part of this, it was, part of this process, it was surprising to me, notwithstanding that I probably voted for it, is that, you know, there's, there's this ability to have this tent up for, is it 60 days or 30 days? I don't know what the standard is now. You know, at some point, can we direct staff to change that? You know, we're now post-COVID. We're now, you know, sort of beyond the need for creating outdoor days for everyday things we used to do inside. We're getting back to a little bit of normalcy. You know, can we revisit that length of time, you know, with, at a future meeting?
We've talked, Jessica and I have talked, because I have, have heard the, some of the comments from the trustees, that we will be looking at making, or we will be bringing back to the board, making the timeframe more in incorporation with the actual event. With, you know, if it's a 24-hour event or a two-day event, we should have to figure out some sort of maximum. You know, if you have a long weekend, maybe that's four days. We also have to find out that if, if you, if you do have a tent up for more than 24 hours and you have to have it, we have, send a person out there to inspect it. We want to be able to recoup those fees, which we don't do now. So yes, we, I believe we will instruct staff to do that.
So if we grant the, the variance that was approved by PCC and we subsequently pass that timeframe change, it would apply?
To this, correct.
Okay.
They will not be able to, because of this, they will always be able to put it in their, their street yard, but they have to put it to the days that are within the new code. And we will make, we've talked to Jessica about making part of that code be health and safety. So if, if there is an issue with, the governor puts another, you know, extension on the thing, then, then, you know, COVID is still with us. So we'll make a carve-out for that.
With that in mind, you know, I think it's important for, you know, village institutions like Presbyterian Church to be able to have those outdoor events, to be able to put up a tent like they do for the Strawberry Festival and other, you know, community-wide events that they're nice enough to sponsor, take people out of the, the heat and be able to have that sheltered space. So, you know, I, I, given that sort of information you just provided to me, I'm much more comfortable in voting.
My, my question is though, do you want to, can we table this to the next meeting and have that information in front of us so we have both of these together? So the, this vote could be done with more information? Yes?
Since you brought that up, I hadn't thought about that, but I think that's an excellent idea. I'd like to table it indefinitely pending the outcome of that zoning amendment to reduce to 30 and 45 days. I agree with trustee Hannan, if they put this thing up for a weekend in the street yard, I'm fine with that. But I don't, I don't think, I don't, I'm not comfortable voting for this relying on that happening.
I agree.
Because it may not happen. I mean, St. Mary's, you're, you're taking something away from other institutions in town who may want a tent for 30 and 45 days, but it's in the parking lot behind the building. No one cares. We're going to take that away, that's the other side of that coin. And so I would, I mean, the season's almost over anyway. So I would think that the applicant, you know, they're going to take it down in a couple of weeks probably according to their own schedule. So let's table this indefinitely, go through that zoning amendment process. If that zoning amendment gets approved to where it's a weekend-type of allowance, then I'd be okay voting for this to allow it in the street yard.
Okay.
Well, so, so, I mean, they've gone through the variation process. It's unfortunate they're not here because they, they could possibly agree to the indefinite, but they also have a right to, you know, have a thumbs up or thumbs down at some point on their thing. I don't have a problem with the tabling, but I think indefinitely, given the text amendment process, the need to go through a public hearing at the PZC, I'd rather, if the board wants to table it, put it to a date certain and then if the church wanted a vote at that point, let them have that vote.
Could we split this up and vote on the, the 90-day part of it? And leave the, the other part of the variation? Because that's the same.
Sure, if you want to make an emotion to accept the findings of the PZC, deny the 90 days, I'm fine with that.
Because that at least puts a.
Puts a finality to that aspect.
Part of it. And then the street yard, we can, we can amend when we, does that sound reasonable?
I like that approach.
Okay, I would need.
You already have a motion.
I know, that's what I would, I, I would need your motion to be amended if you're agreeable?
Make motion to the, to amend my original motion.
To only follow the denial for the 90 days?
Yes.
I'll amend my second as well.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Ethan?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will, the second part of this with it, which is the temporary use of the tent, we will work with staff and, and bring that second part up with that.
Can we do that by motion? I'll make a motion to table that aspect of it for four weeks?
How about till November, November 3rd?
November 3rd.
Till November 3rd?
Okay, do I, second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Hannan. Any further discussion? Ethan?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you have enough information on kind of the parameters that we're looking for?
I do believe so. Staff may have a follow-up inquiry as it relates to parameters, because currently it's 30 days by right or not to exceed 45 days. Based on some of the feedback that we've received this evening, we're looking at more of it being a temporary use of a week or a weekend. Is that fair?
Yes, and I would add to that, I, I would like staff and the village attorney to look at taking this out of the zoning ordinance altogether. If it's going to be a weekend event-type thing, I don't know that it needs to be in the zoning ordinance. But I'll leave that to you.
Okay.
Okay, I, I agree, it would be something more, more event-specific. And I think most events, you know, the longest day would be is four or five days with over the weekend.
So would the preference be that this would be something that would be captured as part of a special event application, I guess, is my follow-up question?
I would leave that up to you, village attorney.
Fair.
Okay, we have our direction, thank you. So November 2nd?
3rd.
3rd. Okay. Moving on, trustee reports and communications, does anybody have a report this evening?
I do.
Trustee Galagos.
Just want to let people know that we did have a very successful weekend with kayak rentals. Most likely our outfitter will return for another one before the end of the season, so you will be posted. Reminder that the Swan Derby will be on Sunday, the 28th. In the event of inclement weather or adverse river conditions, it'll be on the 11th of September. And just also save the date for September 22nd, that's Riverside Day. And we will be honoring this year's Person of the Year, Connie Gordy. And details on that will be forthcoming. That's all I have.
Thank you. Justice Marshazga?
There's actually a lot going on in Riverside, both this weekend and next weekend, in addition to those great events that you mentioned, Alex. Parks and Rec Department is offering a concert in the park, I believe, tomorrow evening at Big Ballpark, starting at 6:00 PM. And then this Sunday, Oak Park is having their Wright Ride, which will be, you'll see a lot of cyclists coming from Oak Park through the lovely Village of Riverside to look at all the Frank Lloyd Wright homes on their trip. Next weekend, Parks and Rec also is sponsoring a movie in the Big Ballpark. That would be Friday, the 26th, I think dusk, 6:30 is the target time. Saturday, they're doing goat yoga in Guthrie Park. I mean, this is really good, I, I know, I know, you have to go to the Parks and Rec website, their catalog offerings, I think it's like $50 or something like that for residents, but it will be a very, very unique experience. After the Swan Derby on Sunday, August 28th, the Olmsted Society is offering one of their historic walking tours of the South Division. That's from two to four departing from the train station. You should get your tickets in advance, though. And speaking of tickets, Hop Stop is coming up. I know, you can get early bird tickets, I'm just telling you now, because your early bird tickets are on sale through the end of the month at only $40 apiece for the Hop Stop Craft Beer and Music Festival, which will be held out of the train station on Saturday, the 24th of September, from 4 to 7, so.
And how do we get the tickets?
Oh, well, you have to get them online. If you go to olmstedsociety.org, which is O-L-M-S-T-E-D-society.org, there will be a link on the front page for you to get your tickets.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Anyone else, yes?
Yes, I have some good news from the Riverside Friends of the Library. After a two-year hiatus, Harvest Bingo is back. Harvest Bingo, the return, will be held Saturday, October 15th, starting at 6:30. And the fundraiser will be held at the Township Auditorium this year, which is a little different, but you can still bring your own wine and snacks. Tickets will be $35. The price has not increased due to inflation, one of the few ticket prices that have remained the same. And they will go on sale on September 15th. This event is a 21 and older event, so line up your sitters. And all proceeds will support the efforts of Riverside Friends of the Library.
And where can we get tickets for that?
Well, tickets go on sale September 15th, but we don't have the, have it set up yet. We're just sort of like a save the date.
Okay, perfect, thank you. The last thing is, Jessica sent a, kind of an update to everybody that I think is very exciting, so I, I asked her if she wouldn't mind just saying again for our audience about the Riverside TV and the upcoming Roku Channel.
So it's, thank you, sorry. So it's very exciting, the Village of Riverside is a member of the West Central Cable Agency. I act on the board on behalf of the village, and I'm actually the chair of West Central Cable Agency. And we've actually partnered with the communities that are also members, which include Indian Head Park, Western Springs, La Grange, and La Grange Park to create a Roku Channel. It is not live yet, it will be soon, and it'll be high-definition. And so we're very excited collectively. It will be referred to as Village Stream. And I want to thank Riverside TV because they are the force behind this, along with Riverside TV, Riverside TV Commission. And I will tell you that Chairperson Hughes has done an amazing job of guiding this process. It's purely because of his knowledge and the support of our TV staff and the commission itself that we're getting this off the ground. So it'll be very exciting. There will be certain items that will be live-streamed, other items that will be available as on-demand. It won't be the same as what is offered through our YouTube channel because there, there's limited space and capacity, and so we want to make sure that we're selective. But the great opportunity with this is we'll be reaching out to both LT and RB to see if they would like to add anything, any content to the channel as well. In addition to being able to share different videos and content that our various communities are doing, because we have to recognize that obviously those that live in Riverside go to Western Springs to patronize those businesses and vice versa. And so it creates this really great opportunity and synergy amongst our different communities to kind of share and roll out those promotional videos about our events, communities, recruitment, et cetera, so.
Thank you. It's exciting. Tonight, we have a need for an executive session to discuss probable, imminent, and impending litigation. The board will not convene, reconvene, and no final action will take place. So I would last ask for a motion in a second to adjourn to executive session.
Don't move.
Motion by trustee Galagos, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Marshazga. Any discussion? I hear none. Ethan, if you'd please call the roll?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting.
Thank you.